Good afternoon. I am convening this meeting of the Budget Committee of the City of Portland. Would you please call a roll?
Fish?
Here.
Saltzman?
Here.
Novick?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Hales?
Here. Good afternoon, everyone. Andrew and Jeremy are prepared to walk us through the decision that we have this afternoon on the city budget, and then we have the Portland Development Commission budget after that.
Would you read the agenda items?
Yes, please. Would you read the first one?
Item 545, Approval of the Fiscal Year 2015-16 Budget for the City of Portland.
Mr. Scott.
So today, the City Council will be approving the budget for fiscal year 2015-16. And there are a few steps and processes we go through. All these are mandated under state law, so it is a little bit Byzantine, but we'll try and walk you through it. The first thing we're going to do is have a hearing on state revenue sharing. Again, this is required in order to receive our state revenue sharing funds, so we'll have that hearing and any testimony on that. At the end of that process, we will move into the approved budget process, and that has a couple of different steps today. First of all, the mayor is going to propose a motion to consider changes to his proposed budget, and those changes are what was filed last week, and it should be what you have in front of you and what's known as the change memo. And so there will be, again, a motion and a second to go ahead and consider those changes to his proposed budget. At that point-
Is that titled consensus amendments?
That is the general fund piece, yes. There are other changes as well, which I'll walk you through when we get to that point, yes. After that, essentially, and that gets this on the table as the Budget Committee for discussion, at that point, the mayor can ask for whether there are any individual amendments from council that still need to be made, any amendments need to be moved and seconded, and then, again, voted on. Each amendment would be voted on. After all of those amendments are voted on, then there will be a motion to approve budget adjustments as amended. And again, that's how we get to the final approved budget, but prior to that, there will be a moment for public testimony, a final vote, and then we'll go ahead and do the tax levies. So again, we do it every year, but there are a number of steps we need to go through. And with that, if there are no questions, Mayor, we'll go into the-
Then I'll proceed into opening a hearing to discussing possible uses of state revenue sharing. This hearing is being held by the City Council of Portland in compliance with the provisions of state revenue sharing regulations under ORS 221.770. It is to allow citizens to comment on the possible use of these funds in conjunction with the annual budget process. As proposed for council adoption, the fiscal year 2015-16 budget anticipates receipts totaling $16,115,255 from state revenue sharing. As has been the case in prior years, it is proposed that this revenue be allocated in equal parts to support fire prevention and police patrol services. Is there anyone here today that wishes to be heard on this subject? That is, how we spend state revenue sharing dollars?
Thank you, Jenny.
No one signed up? No one here to speak on that item, so therefore, I'll close the hearing on the uses of, possible uses of state revenue sharing. And now, it's time to take up a motion on the changes to the proposed budget as presented in the memo approval of the budget for the City of Portland.
Still moved?
Second.
Further discussion on potential changes.
So at this point, I generally sort of walk through what the major changes are, and again, I'll be relatively concise in terms of that. But what you see, and what was filed in terms of the change memo, and you can see these listed in attachments B and C of the document, there are a few different things. There are a number of bureau technical adjustments, and so you'll see a lot of lines in here. As bureaus, once the mayor makes his proposed decisions, bureaus can do certain things within certain parameters just to move money around within their budgets, existing budgets. And so you see some of that happening in here as well. There are also a number of overhead adjustments. We go back, and based on the decisions that are in the proposed budget, we notify the overhead-paying bureaus whether there's been any change in the amount that they owe, and so you'll see a number of changes in here, most of them relatively small-dollar amounts, where those bureaus are adjusting for that overhead change as well. Another item that a number of these line items involve is carryover. Again, in the spring bump from a couple of weeks ago, you took some actions to allow bureaus to carry over funding for certain projects. Once that's been approved in the spring bump, which it has been, we then appropriate those funds as part of the approved budget process, so the bureaus have that funding starting July 1st. And so again, there are a number of appropriations in here for carryover. And then there are also FTE changes. In net, there are a total of three additional FTE involving seven different bureaus. There's an additional FTE in BES, half of an FTE in Planning Sustainability, one FTE in Office of Equity and Human Rights, one in facilities within OMF, one in BHR within OMF, half of an FTE within PBOT, and then minus two of an FTE in parks, having to do with the seasonal maintenance worker conversion funding. So again, that nets out to a total of three additional FTEs as part of the approved budget. And then the final piece that I'll spend a little bit more time on are just the general fund changes, and in front of you, you have the document Mayor's Consensus Amendments, which is just a concise summary of what those changes are. So just very briefly, the Out of the Mud Initiative was reduced on an ongoing basis by about $190,000. The Gateway Legal Services, which had been included in the proposed budget one time, is now shifted over to the ongoing side. The same is true with Southeast Works program. The Parks Seasonal Maintenance Worker Conversion package was removed for $73,500. ONI's budget was increased by $230,000, and in PDC, the VOZ Day Labor Center was funded ongoing at $30,000. On the one-time side, general fund, again, PBOT Out of the Mud was reduced by about $250,000. You'll see the Gateway Legal Services and Southeast Works offsets, since those were moved over to the ongoing side of the ledger. There's $10,000 for a Benson bubbler, which I believe is going to our sister city in China. $30,000 one time for Zenger Farms, $100,000 one time for the Rose Festival, $150,000 for the Rail Heritage Foundation. The next three line items, in the Bureau of Planning Sustainability, the River Access, the Lanzhou Chinese Garden Reflecting Pool Repair, and the Charles Jordan Roof, those have all been removed from general fund because those are going to be funded from TIF resources. And again, specifically, $603,000 for the Charles Jordan Roof is coming from contingency in the Interstate URA, $638,000 is coming from contingency in the Downtown Waterfront URA, and $150,000 is coming from contingency in the Central East Side URA. Included in this, again, these changes to the proposed budget, $500,000 for PDC's Inclusive Startup Fund, and $891,000 for PDC's proposal for a Community Development Fund, and finally, $240,000 for Safe Routes to Schools, which, in addition to the 60 that was originally proposed, gets that up to the $300,000 ask. Those are the high-level summaries.
And those are all incorporated in Attachment B now, right?
That is correct.
So all the adjustments that are attached there to the budget memo under Attachment B include these changes from last week?
Yes, they do. And then the final thing, and you'll see also Attachment D, Budget Notes, there are some wording changes on those budget notes, but no major or material changes.
Okay. Questions for Andrew or Jeremy about the amendments to the budget that we now have in front of us and the motion before us?
Is this, the Attachment B in our document is the current version?
Yes.
Because I see VOZ listed as under ongoing general fund. I thought it was, I thought you just said it was PDC.
No, no, general fund.
Yeah. It's, PDC's now funding the Lanzhou Chinese Garden, half the River Access project, and the Charles Jordan Roof out of Interstate, out of renewal funds, and that allows them to utilize the general fund dollar amounts of $500,000 for the Inclusive Startup Fund and $891 for the Community Development Fund. In other words, they displaced those dollars with TIF dollars, and 891 plus 500 equals 603 plus 638 plus 150. So that's a wash.
The VOZ money continues. We've been paying general fund to PDC.
Been paying general fund, I'm sorry.
It's just administered through PDC.
Yeah.
So that, and it makes it ongoing rather than one time.
Yeah, it's lodged in PDC's budget, but it is general fund.
That's right. And Fritz, on the Lanzhou Chinese Garden, the net effect of this capital expenditure will be to fortify the water feature. There'll be fewer leaks, and therefore, a lower water bill. Are you prepared to make the Water Bureau whole for that?
It's Conservation Commissioner, which you're urging us to do, and that is a bigger-picture problem.
A great peril to my bureau, by the way.
Yes. On that issue, though, I want to clarify that both the Lanzhou Chinese Gardens and the Charles Jordan Roof, which had previously been specified for general fund money through parks, it's now going from tax increment financing through PDC. Need to clarify that that's a direct funding. It doesn't require IGAs and PDC to manage those projects. It's simply a pass-through via PDC, which will come to parks for us to manage those projects.
I assume it'd be a pass-through. It'd still be through an IGA, just for PDC to give the money, but parks would assume the capital assets and be in charge of those projects, yes. But it would still require an IGA to get the funding from PDC.
Transfer the funds, but not, but your point is parks should still manage the projects.
Yeah, even the IGA is extra. It takes more time to get that done, so that's a bit challenging, but I-
Well, we have six weeks.
Yes, we will work on it.
Five weeks.
I know that the TIF that goes to PHB is subject to an IGA. It just might be a requirement of any money that they don't directly administer.
That's right.
We probably have a pretty good form we could update.
Yeah.
As long as we're clear that it's a simple IGA to just grant the money to parks to then manage the projects. That's your understanding, Mayor?
That's the understanding of the council, is that the funds are going to be transferred from PDC to parks under an IGA, and that parks will administer the projects.
Thank you.
Okay. Further questions, clarifications, concerns about the amendment before us?
Regarding budget notes, City Budget Office, when do we need to make amendments to those?
Amendments to budget notes can happen today. They can also happen in the adopted budget process, and two ways for that to happen, the mayor will be filing the adopted budget after TSEC holds their hearing, and so we could make changes in what gets filed. You could also make changes on the floor of the adopted budget, when adopting the budget.
And that wouldn't delay the actual vote on the adopted budget?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you.
At work.
Yeah, there's a couple of budget notes, colleagues, that my staff and I had only just noticed regarding funding for a couple of parks projects that I'm going to be working with the mayor on to clear up.
Yeah, I think it's actually incumbent on all of us now to go back and look through. I'll pledge to do that as well, the actual text of those budget notes, and make sure that we're comfortable with what the words on the page are. We've been focusing on the numbers on the page, now we need to check on the words.
And also, I will have at least one additional one. We've had some discussions at the work session about, for instance, the $1.9 million allocation for the World Championships, so there'll be a budget note that will say, if that money comes from other sources, then any additional general fund would go back into contingency. So something like that. There's a couple of kind of tidying up loose ends that we'll need to do at the next session.
And that would be the adoption of the budget?
On the 18th.
And Andrew, would you remind me, when's the last time at the, when we were voting to adopt the budget, that we made changes to any of the line items?
I'd have to go back. In most years, there have been minor changes, not every year.
More like Scrivener's errors-type things?
Both technical and drawing money from contingency or moving decision packages around, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Further-
Sorry, go ahead. Well, Mayor, I've related to you earlier how, going back to our last budget hearing, there was testimony that kind of set a light off in my mind about Boys and Girls Clubs as being an ally in providing programmed activities for youth, particularly starting this summer. So it's my understanding that there will be a budget note that directs $150,000 a year out of the $2 million ongoing for parks to go to Boys and Girls Clubs?
Here's the way I understood that, but I'm happy that Boys and Girls Club has come forward with a proposal. The Parks Bureau developed the package for the community centers and teen recreation effort, and the items that are costed for the city Parks Bureau to provide directly are totaled about $1.7 million. Then there's $300,000 available per year for partners to fund their ability to make that program work better. There are no, there were no pre-scripted recipients of that, those funds, but the idea was people like the Boys and Girls Club would come forward and say, if we were to be partnered with you, we could provide this much in in-kind services or that much in staff support, and we would ask for this much in city funding in order to do that. So assuming that the Boys and Girls Club are coming forward with a proposal that fits those kinds of guidelines, and they're not much more elaborate than that at this stage, and that we obviously have $300,000 a year available, then I would be comfortable with committing half of that to the Boys and Girls Clubs if, again, they've got a proposal that magnifies or amplifies our effort.
Yeah, well, I think, I have great confidence they'll come through on that end, and I think we all should recognize there are Boys and Girls Clubs located in areas where we are really deficient in community centers.
Right, that's a great attraction.
Sellwood and Lentz, you know, for instance.
And Rockwood, and-
Yeah.
And-
We wouldn't want to presuppose that it's, that they are the designated fundee when there's SCI and various other community organizations too that may want to make proposals to us.
Yeah, I think, I think we want all those folks to come forward with proposals, but again, they certainly make a good case, so I guess I'd like to stop short of guaranteeing them a portion of that, but understand that they are a great partner, and that if they come forward with a proposal that fits within our parameters, that they're in a good position to be one of those partners that gets funded. But no one else has any call on that money either at this point.
Mayor, on the question of criteria, I would, I would not support limiting the Boys and Girls Club or anyone else from applying just because they may be in an area that already, that's also within a catchment of an existing community center. I think of something like the Boys and Girls Club at Rosa Parks Elementary School. They may have, they may have a separate independent program that complements what Charles Jordan Community Center is doing, that technically doesn't fill a gap in an area that doesn't have a community center, but may otherwise have merit. So I would hope that there's not a geographic exclusion in terms of whatever criteria are established.
Right, and I want to give the Commissioner and the Bureau a chance to develop criteria that are more, better articulated than what I've just done here, because again, we, we've believed from the beginning that this program would work better if we could incent our partners to do more, and that some of them would need funding in order to do that. Others would, for example, be able to provide mentors and coaches, but just need a gym to play in. They don't necessarily need funding from us. So it was sort of a stone-soup proposition here, that we create this, this vehicle of the community centers being more available to teen programming. We provide some of it ourselves, and then we ask our partners to step up and, again, amplify that effort.
So the $300,000 a year will be for community partners, but they don't necessarily have to be offering their programs in the community centers?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Right, and Mayor, it's my understanding you'd be taking the lead on that, engaging of the community partners.
Yeah, I'm happy to do the outreach to them, but I obviously want you and the Bureau to sign off on how do we, how do we judge and weigh applications from partners?
Evidently something that we'll be working on together, yeah.
Yeah, so-
The other thing with that regard that just was brought to my attention by the City Budget Office, summarizing what each bureau did get in the budget and what we didn't, was that we didn't fund the security measures at the community centers that parks had asked for, the lockdown and security cameras. So we may need to take a look at that. I'm not sure what's in the particular facilities that we designated as these outreach areas, but it would seem prudent to make sure that we have the physical infrastructure to manage them as well, and that might be something that we would look at, ending fund balances.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't physical infrastructure included in the package, but there was additional staffing for rangers included in the package, so that we would have-
Right.
People infrastructure there to make sure that we're attending to safety, because we're going to have a lot more kids, and some of them at-risk kids in the buildings. That's great.
Exactly.
We want them there, but we also want it to be safe.
And Commissioner Fish took the lead when he was in charge of parks by installing cameras and lockdown capacity at some of the community centers. So I'm just flagging that, obviously, this great concept that you came up with just a couple of months ago is still being fleshed out. That might be something, I know that parks is not going to have much of an ending fund balance at all, and so we may need to look at other bureaus to help provide that if necessary.
And Commissioner, having, having suffered through a summer where there was actually some shootings approximate to North Portland community centers, I believe the view of parks at the time was you needed both. You needed, you needed a physical presence as a deterrent, but you also needed cameras and other tools as backups, and the combination was designed to discourage people from engaging in certain behavior onsite and adjacent to the, but it still didn't prevent people from doing foolish things like discharging weapons and bullets actually going through a community center, so.
Yeah, so we'll need to look at that before we open for the case.
I'm really open to that. Again, we've had, I think now, I asked on the elevator in the Police Bureau this morning, I believe we've had 66 gang violence incidents so far this year. We had another one last night. The total keeps going up. We did have, already this year, an incident where someone was firing down the street in the general direction of the East Portland Community Center through a crowd of teenagers. So the physical infrastructure question is a serious one, and I'm not inclined to be miserly about putting the right equipment in place, but we also need, as soon as we start this program, to have more rangers and staffing to support it, so it's both.
Yeah.
So I guess, you know, not to belay this topic, but, I mean, summer starts in about a week and a half, and the appropriations for the next year don't begin until July 1st. Do we have the, do we have our act together that come summer, June 12th or whatever, when school's out, we're going to have programs going?
No, not that quickly, but I think that if, assuming the council approves this budget today, and the Parks Bureau knows this is coming, then I think the instruction to them should be pretty clear to make preparations to do this as fast as you can. Remember, this is an ongoing program, and it's not just about this summer, but it's this summer too, and so the point is, get started in providing this enhanced level of recreation and make it free to the kids that need it most, and start lighting up each of these activities as quickly as you can. It doesn't take them very long at all to say what was fee-supported is now free. So every Friday and Saturday night at, at these four community centers, teenagers is now free. That's just an announcement with some additional staffing. So some of this stuff can be implemented quicker than others.
Well, particularly since the mayor has graciously and carefully said that the staffing is going to be permanent positions rather than seasonal staff. Clearly, we need people who are going to be experienced and good at what they do, so no, we can't hire them by next week.
Yeah.
Mayor, I just want you to know that when Commissioner Fritz says graciously does something, I put that in the $250,000 to $500,000 cost, with or without a budget note, so I just- Your silence, I think, is a cent.
Graciousness is apparently expensive.
I'll keep that in mind, Commissioner, thank you.
And the other thing related to parks, I want to make sure that we have funded, is the period between when the meal program, summer meal program typically ends and when school begins in the fall. That gap is now permanently funded by parks?
I believe the answer to that is yes.
I think so too, but I'll check and get back to you.
It used to be yes, so I'm hoping it's still a yes.
Right.
Okay, I'll shut up.
Sorry, other, other questions, or again, things to flag like that, that we may need further feedback from the staff line? Okay, then let's take a roll call vote on the-
Actually, at this point, Mayor, you open it up for any amendments.
I thought it was after, okay, sorry.
Now that you've got this on the table and we've described it-
Okay, so a motion for any additional amendments in addition to the motion that's already before us.
Andrew, when do we take testimony?
Testimony will be after all the amendments are on the table, actually after whether, if they've been voted on at that point, and then we would take testimony on the entire package.
We don't vote to put those amendments on the table before we take testimony?
Want to contend?
Yeah, actually, you do.
Okay.
In this process as the Budget Committee.
Don't we, don't we vote on the first one that we just did?
You actually don't.
All right, I'll follow your instructions.
It's a slightly different process than normal.
I want to follow state law.
Because again, you're Budget Committee right now and not City Council.
Got it. Okay, so are there any additional motions for amendments at this time? Okay, hearing then, then we should take a vote to approve those amendments.
So at this point, a motion to, and a vote to approve the budget amendments in Attachments B, C, and D.
That's been moved and seconded, so then let's-
And later, we'll be voting on the whole thing?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so Carla, roll call on approving those amendments.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Fritz? Hales.
Hi, okay. Don't freeze, bastard. Okay, now-
At this point, public testimony on-
Is there any additional, is there any public testimony on the budget and its proposed amendments at this time?
I have three people signed up.
Okay, please.
Come on up, Craig.
Andrew and Jeremy.
Sorry, Craig Rogers, Steve Dotiere, and Veronica Bernier.
Okay, come on up.
Let me go.
I wondered when you were finally going to testify, Craig, so holding your fire.
It's good to see you all.
You too, welcome.
Always excited to be here. And it's my understanding that your number-one priority is public-
Put your name in the record, Craig.
-safety. My name is Craig Rogers. It's public safety, and with that in mind, I'd like to make it a point to thank Commissioner Steve Novick for saving lives. And let me give you an example. Closest to where I live, where there's something very significant to me that you've done, is 113th and Stark. You have a crosswalk there, and every time you and Leah have done that Abbey Road album cover, walk across the street, I really appreciate it. On one side of Stark, you have a church. On the other side, you have a park, and next to the park is a grade school. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic there. You'll never know the lives that you saved, but you have, and I really want to make it a point to thank you for that. And you and I, last summer, we attended emerging local government leaders at the Elliott Center. And at one point, you came up to the podium, and you leaned in and you said, "Let's talk about love." Well, I don't recall exactly where you were.
It was a private conversation.
Not anymore. I don't recall exactly where you're going with that, but stay with me, I'm going to help you with that, because some of the most significant parts of movies are the last lines, and here's a significant line to me of one of my favorite movies. "The house and grounds are left to the city of Gotham, on condition that they shall be used for one purpose and one purpose only, the housing and care of the cities at risk and orphaned children." Well, keeping these community centers open, that's your love right there in this budget, because those are at-risk children that are going to have a place to go to. And I was here when a gentleman testified about his grandmother and then the grandson, and she's going to be so happy that he's going to have a place to go. So I really want to thank you for that, and it really means a lot to me and the rest of the city. And a shiny thing is that, you've got to be a real track nut to subscribe to track-and-field news, you can just disregard that my name's on the mailing label. But right here, if you open this up, well, right on the cover is a gal from UVO, and Oregon 2016 World Indoor Championships. Carla, may I ask if you could give this to our mayor, and perhaps you can pass it on to Gail?
Yes.
So it'll, and I've already read it, it's most recent issue. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Thanks a lot. Steve, welcome.
Thank you. My name's Steve Dotterer, and I'm here testifying for the Architectural Heritage Center, and we would like to comment on the planning and sustainability budget for this year. First of all, we want to strongly support the inclusion of the Single Family Study, the infill design guidelines and standards that is proposed in the budget, and thank the mayor for that. And in carrying out that work program, we believe that it's important to have a full-time Historic Resources staff person in the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability in order to identify those buildings that are historic, and to, and also to know the policies and programs that can be used to protect our- programs that can be used to protect our neighborhood heritage. Finally, we ask that you consider initiating the Historic Resources Inventory in the coming year. We know that this will be a multi-year effort, but it's been 30 years since the Historic Resources Inventory was updated. And what that means is that there's a whole new generation of buildings that are eligible, that is, buildings built between 1930 and 1965. And the city has grown so that nearly a third of its area, all of East Portland, has been annexed, and it wasn't considered when that inventory was initially done. So there's a large area that's underrepresented. And then finally, the definition of historic has expanded, and at the time in 1980, it was pretty much architectural and famous people, and now it's a lot more about ethnic and immigrant communities and a broader definition of what historic is. And so I think when you begin the HRI, you'll be looking at a broader community that better represents what Portland is today. And we just think it'd be useful to get started on that now because we know that it's a multi-year effort. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice to have you back. Okay, others? Want to speak? Okay, then I will close the hearing, correct?
Not yet.
Not yet? Nope. Undo that.
The conclusion of the testimony, now you go ahead and, council will vote to approve the budget as amended.
Okay.
And then we'll go ahead and do the tax levies.
So is there a motion to approve the budget as amended?
Some look?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Fish?
Well, a couple of preliminary comments, Mayor. The first is, we had a question at the beginning of this budget process, whether it would be more difficult or less difficult to make a budget when we were facing relative prosperity rather than relative austerity. And I think the early, the early voting on that was that it might actually be harder to craft a budget when we had plenty versus a cut budget. And there's some history behind that, and I think the, the verdict on that is that this was, this was easier, but that's primarily because I think we had a, a very good process. And so I want to, I want to acknowledge that at the outset, and I also want to acknowledge that this is the, this is the year in which the Saltzman rule kicked in with a vengeance. And Dan has historically said that, that we're always sort of either over, underestimating the downside or the upside. We blew through a milestone this year, and when we got to about $50 million of surplus. So the Saltzman rule is alive and well, and the standard has been set. I want to address three things about the budget process, substance, and next steps. I really give a lot of credit to everyone involved in crafting this budget for what I think has been a very good process, extensive public involvement, great conversations among colleagues and with the staff. And frankly, Commissioner Fritz, as I think about some of the improvements to our budgeting, I go back to a fateful decision to create a truly independent budget office and what we hope that would mean in terms of good communication and transparency of this process, and I think it has continued to bear fruit. So Andrew, to you and your team, congratulations and thank you for the great service you do during this, this process. I also want to just acknowledge that I think the introduction of the new work session, which follows the presentation of the mayor's proposed budget, is a good addition to our process. I hope the council embraces it, because I, I heard nothing but positive comments, both from my colleagues and from the citizen budget advisors that were at the table. And Chris Smith talked about, we used to have a black box, and this brought some sunshine to it. But more than that, I think it gave us in a public setting a chance to have a transparent conversation about potential changes to the mayor's budget and initial reaction. I think the public likes to see us do that work in, in, in the light of day, and they are typically, historically been excluded from those conversations. So I hope it becomes a regular feature in our budget. On the substance, Mayor, I, I want to just compliment you for the priorities that you established for this budget. And I think the focus on basic services, particularly around transportation and major maintenance across a number of bureaus, was the right approach. And that combined with the discipline we showed in adopting a, a policy that said 50% of the one-time money would go to basic services, I think put us on track to, to allocate really a substantial portion of this budget to where I think we were hearing that people wanted us to invest. And, and so I, I compliment the mayor for his leadership in bringing us along, and I think the priorities in this budget were the right ones. There's a number of things in this budget that I especially appreciate. I appreciate the new money for housing. It would not be in my nature to say it's enough, because we're in the middle of a crisis, and so I, I would have said that even if you allocated 50 million. But it is, it is, it is a substantial down payment in a budget where we had surplus, and I hope as a council, we continue to make those kinds of robust investments out of surplus. And in particular, I hope that we build up the Housing Investment Fund that Commissioner Saltzman has championed. I think the investments in healthy families and healthy kids, particularly in light of some of the challenges we have in parts of our community, is the right one, and I look forward to working with the council to get the parks piece right and to work out those details. And I also, Mayor, strongly support the investment in 3D PhD. And I hope that it becomes a tradition of the council, that every year we pick one great community partnership to invest in that's helping students and families in an educational setting prosper. The investments we made in David Douglas' early childhood development are, are just staggering, and that pro, that whole program is, is, is doing well. I think 3D PhD will be a similar shining star in our, in our strategy. I, for one, think the investment in Track and Field is a good one. And I remember when Gail first raised it a couple of years ago, ahead of the lobbying and the, the, the travel and everything else. The one thing that, that travel, not travel Portland, that
Correct, General?
No, that our, our sports authority
Oh, yeah.
people once told me is, one of our challenges in, in the state is that we have such an abundance of great sporting opportunities. And as a result, it's harder for us to have a clear identity, because we are, we are so good in so many things. We're a great place to come golf, we're a great place for Track and Field, we're a great place for soccer. And in some ways, that works against us, because there's so many things that, for which we are noted. And I think Track and Field, particularly because of the proximity to great companies like Nike and Adidas, and also because of the great traditions in, in Eugene and elsewhere. I think Track and Field is, is the next big, big catch for us, so I, I support those investments. I'm pleased with most of the changes that you have proposed following discussions with your colleagues, the right budget for ONI, the additional funding for ORF, and I want to just take a moment to thank all the members of the board at the Oregon Rail Heritage Foundation who have raised almost four and a half million dollars to, in essence, create a home for our steam locomotive. And it makes me proud to live in a community where citizens step up to solve our problems, our, our problems so conspicuously. I'm really pleased that we have put EPAP, the East Portland Action Plan, on, on stable funding, and we don't just every year now come back and see that at risk. And frankly, there's a number of other things that I'm very pleased with. There's one area that I wish I had been able to have, be better in terms of advocacy, and I think I fell short. And in this budget, and at a time of prosperity, we're actually taking a small cut in the RAC budget, below $100,000, and I regret that, because I, I think it is, we made a commitment during the lean years to continue to fund RAC, and I think to cut RAC in a, in a year in which we have $50 million of surplus is a mistake. But I understand that, that, that there's work to be done to actually create a stronger foundation of support for, for investments in the arts, particularly in light of the arts tax, understanding what, which, which program funds what. And I will be taking that up in the months to come. Overall, Mayor, I have to say, I think this has been one of the most satisfying budget exercises that I've been a part of on the council, maybe partly because we had surplus to divide. But I think it's also because the council, through your leadership, set the right priorities, and I think it has been largely a collegial exercise to get to this moment. And so I want to thank you and all my colleagues for this process. I want to thank the professional staff, and I want to thank my team of Sonia and Jim in particular for all the work they've done, and of course, the citizens that have come forward and helped us every step of the way. Today, I'm, I'm proud to support this budget, and I vote aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I want to thank all of us, my colleagues, and the Budget Office and all the bureaus and all of our staffs and our public for helping shape a, a great budget, and it's definitely helps when we have such tremendous growth occurring in our city that we can, we can really tap into this and, and translate it into investments that will make a difference in people's lives. And whether it's infrastructure or teen programs to keep kids busy. So this is good work from everybody, and I'm pleased to vote aye.
Novick?
I also would like to thank Andrew and his team, and thank my bureau directors, Carmen Lo and Lisa Turley and Leah Treet and their staffs for their work in this process, and my staff, especially Katie Schreiber, who's taken point on budget issues. I want to underline today that this budget includes the greatest general fund investment in transportation in 30 years. In 1985, '86, the general fund allocation to transportation was 13.3 million, which adjusted for inflation is slightly above the 29 million that we're allocating today. Ever since then, the transportation general fund allocation has been dramatically lower, which among other things means that Earl Blumenauer, never on the city council, saw this kind of general fund investment in transportation. So I feel very, very lucky to be Transportation Commissioner on a council that has this kind of commitment to transportation, a council that recognizes that what we get from the gas tax and parking revenues is not sufficient to meet our maintenance and safety needs. So I just wanted to say that I'm very grateful to my colleagues. Thank you very much. Aye.
Fritz?
Well, thanks to Mayor Hales for making this a very collaborative budget process, and it's important to get to five, especially on something as important to this, and I appreciate that, particularly Josh Albert on your staff, who's been doing shuttle diplomacy and working out kinks and everything else in between, and has done a great service to the city of Portland. Thank you to each of my colleagues. When all five of us work together, we do our best work, particularly when guided by great staff who are giving us objective knowledge. So thank you to Andrew and the entire city budget office team. I think we have created an excellent process where citizens feel heard. In fact, citizens are heard, and I agree with Commissioner Fish that the work session was another addition. I would encourage us all to get back to our bureau, our budget advisory committees in, in our bureaus to let them know what the final decisions were and why, and to continue to engage bureau advisory committees throughout the year so that our citizens are, are with us, watching over every penny. Thanks to everybody who, who participated in the budget forums, and to Resolutions Northwest for facilitating those. Thank you to my bureau directors, Mike Abate and Paul Scarlett, and also to Dante James of the Office of Equity and Human Rights, who I thought was a very valuable addition, sitting at the table, giving his expertise, and Amalia Alacron-Domaros, who is in charge of neighborhood involvement, which I think, as with the city, with, as with the city budget office and the Office of Equity and Human Rights, I see the Office of Neighborhood Involvement serving all of us, and I appreciate Amalia's input on, into this budget. Want to repeat what Commissioner Novick just said, 29 million in this, in this year's budget for transportation. So thanks to Mayor Hales and Commissioner Novick for spending much of last year highlighting the challenges of infrastructure maintenance, particularly in transportation. As we all know, parks and housing and emergency management also have huge deficits, and yet we have wisely allocated the bulk of the extra money to transportation in recognition that our citizens are not going to accept the need for more funding if we're not allocating our current funding wisely. And I believe we are spending taxpayers' money wisely in these investments. I'm very proud of the policy that the council passed this, earlier this spring, allocating 50% of any one-time money and ending fund balance to infrastructure maintenance in transportation parks and emergency preparedness, which, since we have 36 million in one-time funds, that means, means that 18 million is budgeted for crucial safety needs and maintenance needs, or rather, including 12 million for transportation projects on a, with 122nd Avenue receiving over 3.3 million in paving funds and additional 4.7 million for safety improvements. We are continuing to invest in areas of the city that have long been lacking in services, and we are prioritizing that, even with relatively scarce resources. I think it's easy to forget, when you have a budget surplus of 30, so-called surplus of 36 million, the hundreds of millions of dollars worth of needs in all over the city in the four major areas, and so we will, we're not done yet. Very grateful that thanks to the 50% policy, we do, are receiving funds in parks for the Charles Jordan Community Center roof, the Mount Scott Heating System, the Zither Pond at the Lansu Chinese Garden, which I was previously forgot was called Zither, and I think that's an excellent name. The Skavon Stadium Lighting, Willamette Park dredging, and Forest Park culvert repair, all really crucial maintenance projects for our parks infrastructure. As I mentioned, there are a couple of budget notes, one for Mount Scott and one for the Skavon Stadium Lighting, that are of concern, and we will, I'll talk with the mayor about those and hopefully get those addressed before the approved budget vote. I am delighted with the right budget for ONI, and thank you so much to everybody who wrote in with personal stories about what that means to you. 180,000 goes to the Diversity and Civic Leadership Program, which the Harvard Kennedy School recognized this spring, or last, last month, as one of the top 10 innovations in public engagement in government in their Innovations in American Government Awards. This was a competition with 500 entrants, and we were in the top 2% with the Diversity and Civic Leadership Program. And when Commissioner Hales asked me to be on the Task Force for Neighborhood Involvement back in 94, 95, we figured out what's necessary in the Office of Neighbour, in the Neighborhood Involvement system, and that is to fund programs which previously had not had enough attention, particularly Diversity and Civic Leadership, people with disabilities, and youth. And that's what this right budget for ONI does. 20 years ago, we knew what the answer was. We're finally in a position where there's a mayor who's willing to commit to funding those needs. So in addition to the money for the Diversity and Civic Leadership Partner, including an extra partner to be fairly apportioned by, with a competitive process to decide who the new partner is going to be, there's 30,000 for Neighborhood Small Grants, which you give citizens, $1,000 or maybe even 500 bucks, and it's amazing what they can do in partnership with the different folks in their community who might never go to a neighborhood meeting but would love to show up to create a community garden, or a booth, or a kiosk, or a food program for some of their needy neighbors. So that's, that's terrific. And also the, the 10,000 for the Youth Commission, and 10,000 for connecting communities for people with disabilities, experiencing disabilities. Those are really important programs, and I appreciate your investment in people as well as projects and things. I'm very happy that the parks is receiving funds for fountain maintenance, not because I'm a particularly big fan of the fountains, although I think they're really great. It's
Who'd strike those words, please?
It's a continuation of making sure that ratepayer dollars pay for the rate-funded portions of the budget, and taxpayer general fund dollars fund, fund other things. Because the mayor chose to allocate money for fountain maintenance, Buckman Pool and Selwood Community Center are no longer at risk. They are in the ongoing budget, and I'm very glad that we won't be having that discussion, at least until we get into a further discussion of what do community centers look like in the 21st century, and, and are there some new ways of looking at what that, the functions of a community center that might not involve tens of that, millions of dollars for a new pool? There might be some other creative ways of doing things, and certainly the little pool at Buckman is necessary until we can fund the inner Southeast Community Center, and the Selwood Community Center provides a lot of very cherished services. I agree with Commissioner Fish that the ongoing funding for the East Portland Action Plan is very satisfying and, and great work on their part. Also, the 250,000 for Gateway Green, which furthers a community-driven mountain biking effort, which will match nicely with the other efforts that we, the other work that the mayor is leading on mountain biking opportunities. We're looking forward to working together on the youth initiatives in the community center. It's not well-defined as yet, but we will work hard to make it as, to get, get it so, and we're looking for partners. So if those are watching and wondering, what could it be, what might it be, join the conversation, because we can work it out together. There will be a couple of budget notes, in, in addition to the, the ones I already mentioned, one on the indoor track funds that we will be approaching Travel Portland, and others to see if we can get some money from other sources to supplement those, to, to replace the general fund dollars, and if that's the case, we'll put the general fund money back into the contingency. There are some huge upcoming expenditures that we know are coming along. We've worked very hard this budget year to get $15 an hour for direct city contractors and for all full-time city workers. We still have more than 2,000 parks workers who do not make $15 an hour. We have our contracted, our contracts with entities like the Pioneer Courthouse Square, whose custodians don't make $15 an hour. whose custodians don't make $15 an hour. There's various other elements that we, even without the legislature taking action on raising the minimum wage, that we can do if we have the discipline and the funding to be able to direct money to those in our community, who, part of the reason that they can't afford housing is because they don't make enough in their 40-hour-a-week, or 60-hour-a-week, or 80-hour-a-week jobs. And so we're not done yet, but I concur with my colleagues, it's really much more pleasant to be looking at where to allocate new money wisely, rather than to looking at where the cuts would be least painful, as has been in the past. So thank you to all, to all. Aye.
Hales.
Well, I'm very proud of this budget and the good work that we've all done together to draft it and get it to this point here today. Budgets are values expressed in dollars. They're also expressed in words, as we try to do here, but budgets are where we put our values into line items of dollars, of, in this case, public money. And I think one of the reasons why this budget has been a successful process is that there are some strong shared values on this council that I think reflects those in the community that we heard from some folks eloquently about today, and that we heard during the hearings. And those values of, of basic services and housing and public safety and kids, really the themes of this budget, are expressed in dollars in this budget. And so I want to thank my colleagues for being clear about what their values and priorities are, and for our ability to work together as a board to get to a shared understanding of where we should focus our work and our priorities over the next year. I also want to echo some comments that my colleagues have made here about the validity of this process. You know, one of my favorite parts of the budget process the last few years have been the, the groups of New Portlanders who come to the budget hearings, many of them participating for the first time in any kind of democratic process, and we've all seen those moments. And, and see, seeing those folks both participate and be influential is a powerful moment for me, to see them come in and say, this is what I would like for my community, and for my kids, and for my family, and for my future. And have it show up in what we actually do is such a validation that the democratic process works in our city, and I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of some long-term commitments that we've made in this budget, not just that we are experiencing prosperity and are rightly focusing those additional resources on transportation and parks, and a new server to run our 911 center and those other kinds of important, basic infrastructure pieces, but that we're making some long-term commitments here that are going to pay off long after the public service career of the five of us has ended. One of those is the Out of the Mud effort, that we are beginning, albeit modestly, an effort to partner with our neighborhoods and our citizens who have been living on dirt streets since they got annexed to the city of Portland, or whenever, back in the midst of time, some local government allowed them, their, their previous homeowners to build houses on streets without sewers or pavement. For us to finally, now that we got the sewers installed, start working on the pavement, one way or another, through local improvement districts, or however we make that work, to make a long-term commitment that someday, every street in the city of Portland is improved to a standard that the people that live on it want it to see, want to see. That's a good thing, for us to be able to say that. And then for us to make this ongoing commitment, albeit yet not fully fleshed out, to giving free and available recreation choices to our kids, I'll tell you, I, I'm so passionate about that. Again, every day I'm getting reports about the increase in gang violence. I was there at the East Portland Community Center a few minutes after that young man turned and fired back into the crowd, towards the East Portland Community Center, but blessedly hitting neither anyone there nor even the community center itself. You know, we've got to give our kids positive options, we all know that. We don't get the chance to talk to Charles Jordan about this anymore, but I did get the chance the other night, because I ran into him at an event, to talk to Roy Pittman, who, as those of us who've worked in parks for a while know, has been teaching kids to wrestle at Peninsula Park Community Center for decades, or thousands of young people who've been affected by this guy, and talked to him about this program, and, and to hear his validation that this is the right thing to do was also pretty powerful. This council has, as far as our research has been able to determine, this council has, in three years, dealt with the biggest budget deficit in the history of the general fund, or at least its recent history, and the biggest budget surplus. Dubious honor in the first case, and a wonderful opportunity in the second, but I think our values have been consistent through that process, and I think we've shown that we are good managers of the public's money. Couple more mentions there. We are in this position today because the city of Portland is prosperous. We have the fastest-growing gross domestic product in, in the fastest-growing cities in the country. We have 4.8% unemployment in this city. We've created 23,000 jobs in the last two years in this city. Business profits are up. That's a good thing, and it's a good thing in part because it rains down benefits to public services that the city and the county provide. So that's why the city and the county are enjoying this. So we have a responsibility to keep that good economy going, and it's now paying dividends for our citizens. Finally, I want to say thank you to, first, Andrew and his team. They've worked as, as they have always, totally professionally, totally thoughtfully, and relentlessly prudent in their use of these dollars. And we have arguments and discussions around our tables with them about this or that expenditure, and you and your team, Andrew, are first-rate in everything you do, and, and totally mindful of the fact that these are, every one of them, a public dollar that somebody's paid in taxes, and that sensibility just shines through in everything that you do. And I don't know how many people in the city really appreciate that fiscal prudence that you live and breathe, but we do. So thank you for that good work. To Gail Shibley, and to the rest of my staff who've worked so hard to craft this budget, thank you for good work as well. And to our bureau staff and directors who came forward and answered hard questions, or in a couple of cases like this Parks program, developed something new and effective in a very short time, I think, I thank them for good work as well. So I'm very proud of this budget. Mike Lindberg came in here the other night and said it was transformational. That's high praise. I think it's certainly a great accomplishment for us as a community, and an opportunity to build a city that we all love, and that will be better because of the way we spend these dollars. I'm happy to vote aye. Thank you very much. And now, I believe, we're going to adjourn the Budget Committee.
Not yet. Approving the tax levies.
Sorry. Got to approve the tax levies. There it is. Item number 10. Okay.
Always the most important.
The Budget Committee money.
It's all-
Funny money. We're not going to actually levy the taxes to do all this. Okay, the Budget Committee will now levy, it's, the city shall now levy its full permanent rate of $4.5770 per $1,000 of assessed value, and $15,293,000, sorry, $15,293,219 for the payment of voter-approved general obligation bond principal and interest, and $133,795,013 for the obligations for the Fire and Police Disability and Retirement Fund, and $0.4026 per $1,000 of assessed value for the children's levy. Furthermore, the city shall levy the amounts listed in the attachment E for Urban Renewal Collections. May I have a motion, please, to approve these tax levies?
Subdued.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call on the motion to approve the tax levies.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
I just want to take the opportunity to say that we live with a ridiculous property tax system that we in the city can't do anything about. The values of properties are tied to whatever the values were in 1995, which means that in parts of the city where values have increased rapidly since 1995, they're paying, based on assessed value, which is much lower than the real market value, but in parts of the city where values have not appreciated rapidly since 1995, including much of Far East Portland, then people are paying, based on an assessed value, that's much closer to their real market value. So I just want to take this opportunity to say, I'm sorry about that. I wish we could fix it. Maybe someday the legislature will send something to the voters that gives them an opportunity to have a more equal property tax system. Aye.
Fritz. Taxes pay for services, and we just allocated the services with the apportioned money. Very grateful to the taxpayers and ratepayers of Portland for the public money that is dedicated, and I will continue to spend it wisely. Aye.
Hales.
Aye. And finally, just, if I could take 30 seconds before you adjourn, I thank you for the comments about, but I wanted to just recognize myself, the CBO staff, they're hiding behind the pillars, but if they could all stand up. Yep, yep.
Yep, we're going to suspend the rules and thank our staff. Nicely done.
As I think you all know, hours and hours of analysis and work go into these, this, this five or six-month period of time, and, and they're the ones sort of pulling the late nights to, to make the process run smoothly. So I just wanted to thank them myself as well.
You're here.
And I'd also like to thank you with working with each of our staffs. I neglected in my comments to thank Tim Creel, but each one of us has one or more staff who are definitely our point people, and we appreciate your availability and that of each of your staff, that we can go directly to you and ask our questions and get them answered quickly. So thank you.
I appreciate your staff's availability when you're not available. So, thanks very much.
Good work. Thank you very much, and now I will adjourn the Budget Committee. Thank you. Okay, we'll take a moment's break here to switch staff, and we'll move into the PDC Budget Committee meeting.
Thank you.
I announced it at the event we had at that round.
Oh, good, good. Oh, nice, excellent. That's great. Yeah, that's good. Oh, they hadn't heard yet. That's cool. That's great.
Patrick, I hope you have two checks for Commissioner Fritz.
Yes.
Two.
Two.
Omar, are you-
Yeah, or maybe, yeah, more than that. She'll take more. Okay, I'm now convening the Portland Development Commission Budget Committee for the purpose of approving the fiscal year 2015-16 budget. The Budget Committee members receive copies of PDC's budget and an approval change memo on Thursday, May 21st. Gina, would you please call the roll?
Fritz?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Saltzman?
Here.
Novick?
Here.
Hales?
Here. I'm now calling for a motion to consider the changes to the proposed budget as presented in the change memo and Exhibit A. Do you need to describe any of those for us, gentlemen, or, I know you did before, or answer any questions that the council has about changes? We discussed earlier the, the changes in the general fund budget that are then, which are then mirrored in the PDC budget, that is, that tax increment funds will be used to pay $150,000, $150,000 towards the River Access Project, $638,000 towards the Lansu Chinese Garden Repair, and $603,000 towards the replacement, repair and replacement of the Charles Jordan Roof. That will enable general fund funding of the Inclusive Startup Fund at $500,000, and the PDC Community Development Fund at $891,000. So the council reviewed all those changes on the general fund side a few minutes ago. I think we're clear on those.
Can I, is this time for a question?
Yes, please.
Yeah, we're, we're here for questions. You have the memo, so we're, we're here.
At your service.
The May 21st memo?
Yeah. Yep.
Mr. Executive Director, under my name, number one, about the status on the Multnomah County Health Headquarters, do I read this as you will be extending the timeline for final installment, but it is conditioned on this being for a county health headquarters and not for some other purpose?
Yeah, that's correct. And, and, and-
But can't-
Since the last meeting, I've had a chance to, to check in with the county on this, and, but what they tell me is they plan to proceed with that project, so it doesn't seem to be anything else.
Okay. And if for some reason they choose not to, for whatever reason, then it would come back to us for further discussion, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the overall money involved, I think, we, it's still a, a, an agreement between, between PDC and the county related to changes to the River District many years ago and other things, and so we would want to help them find another project that was TIF-eligible, but, but yeah, we could, we would be able to come back and talk about what that project is.
But let's just be clear, I know it's, I'm beating a dead horse here, but the, the dirt that we, I threw in was contingent on it being a 30% eligible project, not some other project.
Yeah.
So, separate and apart from the TIF that they are entitled to by virtue of the overall deal on urban renewal, the dirt is contingent on it being a 30% set aside eligible project.
That's a set, yeah, and that's a deal between the city and, and the county.
We're clear about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just so you're aware, it's not, it doesn't impact anything, any budget, you know, that issue right now, but we have agreed, actually, to resolve an outstanding $9 million payment that we, we made to the county in downtown waterfront, kind of a similar type of agreement, but, but 10 years ago, that they've been able, unable to, to use, we will actually transfer that obligation to River District and transfer a similar obligation back to downtown waterfront. So our contribution to the county Health Headquarters building will be $9 million more, and then we will no longer have the, an obligation in downtown waterfront to the county. So we're working on updating our IGAs, but that's an agreement in principle, so. Other questions for Chair or our team from the, from PDC? Okay, so then, that's, that's, the change memo includes the amendments as described, and as we've discussed, are there any individual amendments to this memorandum from commissioners that anyone wants to propose now? Okay, hearing none. Then we'll thank the three of you, call for public testimony, if there is any, on the budget as, as proposed, and on the amendments that are before us. Thank you. Thank you.
Mary Ann Schwab?
Okay, Mary Ann. You get to sing solo this afternoon, it looks like.
Good, maybe we can turn off the blanky-blank clock.
Well, no. We're not going to start that practice. Who knows where that would lead, but we'll, we'll be at least relatively-
Nice try.
I'll push your luck.
Nice try.
Thank you. Oh, we get a-
Okay. This, this, this is serious stuff. I want to talk about Washington High School, PDC budget, the park budget. We've been at this since 2004. We've been in queue now for, since a good 30 years, and I understand, Fix Our Park, I'm really thrilled we're fixing parks. I can understand waiting another 10, 15 years to get it constructed, but we are at risk of losing our land facing southeast Morrison. That's open space right now. Back in the 90s, they upped it to RH when the building was empty, this Washington High School, and back in the same period of time, St. Francis Park was there. Lots of changes going on. Portland Public Schools went down to the planning and tried to up it to an EX. It's been nine, 10 months, they finally came to Portland, the Buckman Neighborhood Association, and they let us know, they didn't get in touch with us because they barely got it in public hearing time. By March 30th, they lowered it to CM3. We don't want that. We want open space for our children to run and play. I was hoping to get here in time to beg for a million of your $40 million surplus, but I'm also aware, and I have documents to prove it, we had 5.1 million in queue with PDC for the, a projected cost funded by TIF within the Central City East Side. And also, we have the million, now with their record, it's 985,000 in queue, and that is due to expire in June of 2017. So short of my going out with a bake sale, how can I get another million dollars to buy this land? We have many, many millionaires with deep pockets, deeper than mine, that maybe would want to leave something behind for the children they never had. Let's try to keep the open space. In your own comp plan, you need at least 10 acres for community centers, and Commissioner Fritz is right, they're $10 million, it's a lot of money. But we have been tap dancing around and coming down here again and again just to keep a swimming pool open. There are seven inner-southeast neighborhoods that started out to be HCD model cities neighborhoods way back in the late 70s, early 70s. I've been at this this long, trying to meet the needs of our kids in the inner city. I've given you my document. I don't know what else I can do. I have the history of who bought what, what was paid for, you name it, I can bury you in paper if that's what you want. But I'm not going to spend my ink doing it. I'll give the copies down to ONI, and maybe they can print them for you if that's what you need. So again, I'm here asking for assistance. Seriously, I don't want to lose that land facing Morrison Street. Please help me with this. I'm begging you to help me, not just for me, but for the generations to follow. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
This is not technically comments to the budget, but can we engage in some-
Yeah, no, I, I would, I'd like to-
It is budget. Yours are-
No, I'm, I'm, I'm doing you a service by opening it up.
Thank you.
I'm not arguing.
I thought you were teasing me, all right.
I'm not arguing with you on this.
Okay.
I'm pleading your case. Mary Ann has also raised this with me because I have some institutional memory of the option we created, we negotiated with Portland Public Schools once upon a time, when there were some other moving pieces, including the potential acquisition of Washington Monroe High School, and potential funding, and some potentially staged for a, a new community center. Without getting into the merits of this, because I don't have the records to, to verify what the position is, what I would simply ask Mayor and Commissioner Fritz is that we- we pull the records that Parks has relating to this transaction, because I do remember negotiating, it might have been around the time that we, during one of the episodes where we gave some general fund money to Portland Public Schools during a dip. And I do remember this being negotiated. I do remember this being a council priority. I don't remember what the commitment was, other than having an option. And an option of first refusal doesn't necessarily commit us to doing anything, but I would ask that those documents be retrieved so we can at least revisit the question well in advance of the expiration of the option date and then decide as a council how we want to proceed. That's separate and apart from the merits of the issue.
That expires June of 2017, by the way, and I have those resolution numbers.
We have the records, Commissioner, and be happy to have a discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, so, but the property is not, that's an option that the city has until 2017? Is that right? So the parcel can't be sold by the school district during that time?
Well, it could be, subject to an option.
There are two peoples, that's what the notes that I hand you, there are two parties of interest bonding that property right now. Already one has filed a right of first refusal on it because they know the city has no money.
Okay, but that, I'm sure there are lots of people who'd like to buy that property, but the point is, my point, my question is, can it be sold to anybody else but us during this time?
We just, all we negotiated was the option of them coming to us and saying, "You can match."
So they have to come to us first.
And I told Sarah King that if necessary, it's just a piece of paper, I will ask the council to sign another intergovernmental agreement. We can keep signing them again and again and again, just to keep it on hold.
I hear you.
And then maybe put a community garden there for right now, maybe fence off a dog park. Let's start putting some people on that open space. You're already getting $50,000 for the next five years for the teachers' parking lot. So, I mean, we're doing what we can. Please help us.
And Mary Ann is exactly right. It's a matter of the money to buy it and to develop it.
I know. There's a millionaire out here that could do it. They could just write the dump, blanket, blanket check.
One thing I want to make sure we don't forfeit is acquiring it through an option of a right of first refusal just gives us the control of the site. Doesn't mean we necessarily exclusively develop the site, but there is, there is an upside to this site, some blend of community needs, park needs, and other things. I just want to make sure that if our option expires, it expires because we've consciously decided that under no circumstances there are housing, parks, or other community benefit that we want to pursue.
Right.
Well, Commissioner, it would take additional general fund money to be able to buy it because it's, we currently don't have the system development charges to be able to buy it.
I understand that.
Sure.
The good Band-Aid, the good tourniquet is just renew that right of first refusal. In the meantime, I'll have a bake sale.
It settles for just having the documents.
Yeah, and I appreciate, Mary Ann, I appreciate you highlighting the issue. I think we can do better than Band-Aids and tourniquets and any other metaphors we want to use. You know, we have a very highly-developed partnership with Portland Public Schools that includes.
No, it's frazzled. We can talk later.
Hang on, well, we'll talk later. Let me talk now, though. We have a highly-developed partnership with Portland Public Schools that includes the city of Portland paying for really important things like school resource officers. So it's not, we're not without leverage in this conversation, and I'm happy to make sure that the five of us are focused on not losing any good opportunities because they're not making any more land. So appreciate your careful vigilance over this issue.
I'll be back.
I'm sure you will. Thank you. All right. Anyone else to speak on this? Okay, so I'll now entertain a motion to approve the budget adjustments.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call on approving the budget adjustments as shown in Exhibit A of Resolution 7116.
Fritz?
Why are we doing Fritz first?
Because I'm in position number one, and it's the, it's the PDC budget, not the council order.
Wow. You are always in position number one in my book, but I just, since I've been used to being the first, I was just inquiring as to why we're changing the order.
She could get, okay.
Okay, can I say one thing more?
We're already in motion, so let us proceed. Let us proceed here.
Oh, all right. I'm glad you are.
Frankly, I just wait to be called Commissioner Fish. Just do as I'm told.
What is it about Fish and Fritz? I know there's some things that are distinguishing characteristics, but I, we do get confused a lot.
It's easy to do.
We're at the local roast festival. This is the book.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate the work at the Portland Development Commission, your accommodation of some of many of the council's requests, including the funding, handling the ongoing funding for VOS and Southeast Works. Now, that's, that's great. The partnership on figuring out how to fund tax increment, use tax increment financing for where appropriate and then general fund where appropriate. I think it's getting to the best of both worlds. Thank you. Aye.
Fish?
Yes, thank you, Patrick, and senior team. Thank you to the chair and the leadership for the time you spend with us at this time of the year to get it right. I would, I would highlight a couple of things. I'm very grateful for the deep commitment to affordable housing in North Macadam. And I also appreciate, within the framework of the new strategic plan, the additional emphasis we'll be placing on the creative economy as a potential driver, as one of the clusters we'll be looking at. And beyond that, this is our last vote on the budget, so I will be brief. Aye. Thank you.
Saltzman?
I want to thank the PDC Commission and its chair and the staff of the PDC. Please vote aye.
Novick?
I'm thankful that I didn't have to take up as much of your time discussing the budget as I did discussing the urban renewal boundary changes earlier in the year. Thank you very much. Aye.
Hales?
Well, thank you, Tom. Thank you, Patrick, and your team for great work. I appreciate it, especially Patrick's fervor about this Inclusive Startup Fund and his real creative solution to making sure that we fund it. So that, that came from a place of commitment to the goals that we have in this strategic plan and that we have for PDC and that both our board and our executive director share with the council in making sure that we are really working on shared prosperity, not just surfing the wave of growth and, and investment that's coming our way otherwise. So thank you for that commitment philosophically and for a great budget, for a great organization. Aye. And now a motion, now a vote on the budget as amended, please. Roll call.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. And the Budget Committee of the Portland Development Commission is adjourned. Thank you. And we're done. Thank you all.